He's ready for you.
Hi, yes, good morning, everyone. Today's Thursday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and we're here for a work session. As always, we can start with the pledge of allegiance. And Tim, can you please take the lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tim.
Don't throw that at me, and I swear, at times, when I stand up, I forget the words to it.
No, don't say that.
You've said it a million times in your life, and then all of a sudden, it's like...
Tim, you have no problem loading, huh? Tim, your computer's up fine?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I just brought up the police report.
Aren't you a computer-designated board member?
That's not the problem. PCs are pieces of...
Okay.
I'm gonna say, but...
All right, so we're gonna move on to announcements today. A reminder that tomorrow, Friday, August eighteenth, it's the last, live on twenty-five on Main Street. This is a rainy day. It's scheduled to... Between the hours of five-thirty P M. to nine P M., and there's gonna be all types of bands and multiple stages and crafts and fun stuff for kids and outdoor dining, and we hope to see you all there, and hopefully, the weather's gonna cooperate in the late afternoon. And next, a reminder that Saturday, August nineteenth, from eleven to midnight, is the much anticipated Riverhead Polish Festival. It's coming back, and it's bigger this year, and we wanna thank Lisa and Najon for working on this, and we're really looking forward to that, and it's gonna have all types of Polish funds and traditions, and there'll be a king crown, and there'll be a queen crown, and we'll hope to see you there also. And we're gonna move on to our first discussion today, which is matters around the capital improvement project with town engineer Jew Dillingham, and just recently, Mr. ... Our engineer has provided us with a capital infrastructure list.
You guys have their own list?
Yes, I... Debbie was copying it.
I don't...
Okay, I bet she's gonna copy. Debbie, did they finish copying the stuff that I needed? And can they put it online? Yeah.
No.
So, so, Jew, I see that this list is... Okay.
Make sure you have the sample list.
No, I have this.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
That's in the back.
So give this to Debbie to also put up.
That's in the back.
Can I have a copy?
Debbie, can you get a copy of the stuff for... For Alex?
Yeah.
No, the other stuff that's going online. So this... Okay, I'll give it. Just give me the packet and get a copy of this. Put this online and then get me the copy back. It'll just have to be right now, because we're gonna read it. Oh, no, wait a minute. You might as well give it back. I'll do it, and I'll give it to you. So here's this. That's stuff from Joe. Not sure. So, yes, absolutely.
So... I was asked to discuss our annual priority list of capital improvements. They range from mechanical projects to, well, the full gamut, including parks projects and other type of infrastructure, gray infrastructure, roadways, et cetera, et cetera. I've made a couple changes, and I'll let you know as we go along what they are, just because some items have become more critical just in the last couple of months since this was done. We submitted this with a budget, so it's... This is fairly recent. The first item... This has been a problem, obviously, for a while. Systems from the seventies. The only issue is, and we have a design for it, but we can't submit plans and specs for bidding because we don't know exactly what we're going to do with the building yet. Whether it's one courtroom or two courtrooms, the design could completely change. So even though it's top priority, it all depends what happens in the next year.
Also, and I'm sure you're mindful, that any time you build or you move an existing court, you have to clear everything, your plan through the O C A, the Office of Court Administration.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and that can take some why at some time, and I would not... You cannot put anything to bid until they approve your plans, and they have to find a say. We don't have a say. If they say this is... You have to build cells here, you have to put four doors here, you have to reinforce this wall, you have to put water in here, and I remember working with cells. It has to have a certain ventilation system, the Albany has to come and inspect it. I remember picking people up from Albany so they can come and inspect all the cells in New York City, and they would do the size, the height, the temperature, the availability of water, the bathrooms. So that in itself is gonna be... And I know that they had designated O C A our cells unsafe, and that's why we need to move, but they should be an integral part of the plan planning process.
So we'll put a question mark there for now until the O C A weighs in and we know exactly what our needs are gonna be. Is that okay?
Sure.
We have no choice.
Right. The other thing is that the O C A is just gonna be one agency of probably a dozen weighing in on this, right down to the Health Department.
That's right.
And Health Department approvals could take over a year easily. So it's multifaceted involvement on that, and the estimate was a half million. The next item, I moved...
Drew, can I just back up for one second? One of the things that we need to add on the town hall, I know you have H V A C, is to water proof the foundation. So at some point, we need to get a...
The hope, can I chime in?
Chime in.
Okay, the hope was that that would be done. I'm not sure where you stand on the conversion of this town hall to a justice court, but if this, if that happens in the conversion process, that was one of the key things that would be done.
Okay.
And the H V A C as well. That's why we held up. We actually have all the plans and specs done.
Got it. Got it. Thank you.
Okay.
I was appalled, Jew, when I saw that we don't have a fire alarm in the municipal garage. That's despicable.
It's illegal.
That should not exist, and this is why I decided we need to bring this up for work session, and we need to prioritize our infrastructure.
Every year, we bring it up.
No, well, it's... Well, now this year, it's being addressed.
Okay.
Okay, I can't go back for the past, or maybe I missed it, and, you know, my supervisors and my three years here, but we're gonna move forward, and that should be a priority. That is not healthy, and...
Well, we had it as second, but before the meeting, Ken and I took one, two, three, four, fourth from the bottom, which is Riverhead ambulance heating and cooling unit replacement.
Yes.
That unit is about forty years old. We moved that to second.
Yeah, we had problems last year with it, and we had a lot of trouble getting parts. It's the old-school, open flame type.
Right.
It's really, really dated, and we had trouble getting parts for it last year. I think, you know, if we... I would expect within the... If not this winter, next year or the following winter, it's gonna fail.
Okay.
And that's gonna cost us more to replace it as an emergency.
And another reason I brought this up was that I'm doing the budget meetings, because we have the preliminary budget meetings, and they have two issues that were imminent that needs to be addressed immediately. Apparently, they have a hole in one of their docks, and they have pails catching the water, and apparently, one of their windows... Debbie, I know you spoke to them.
In the kitchen.
What's going on in the kitchen?
The window in the kitchen is leaking.
But not just a little leak. It's like, they said it's... It's... Rain's coming in, they're cleaning up the floor, it's pretty... So... And I know you didn't know that, but...
This is at Second Street?
No.
No, this is the ambulance garage.
Ambulance.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you might wanna...
We'll check on the... And that sounds like it's probably something that's, you know, a repair issue. But the roof, again, the building, the ambulance garage was built in the mid-eighties, and, you know...
Well, there's a hole they can see through. I don't know, maybe we can cover that for the meantime.
In the roof?
Yeah, you might wanna just go visit.
Yeah, no, no, we've been there trying to patch, and I'm pretty sure it's been... Unless this is more recent information.
I think it was.
Where the yellow tarp is, there's a square cut out in the building, and there's a tube coming down.
Okay.
Yeah, so anyway, you might wanna...
Yeah, we've been trying to, you know, we've been trying to patch it together, but it's thirty-five years old and really needs a roof.
Yeah, and the kitchen, the kitchen...
We'll check that window.
That's... That was... Apparently, it got worse recently, and actually, Pat, the president, was actually pretty upset that this was happening to those members. So if you just wanna take a look at it...
I'm surprised he didn't take any contact.
Yeah, we didn't. That's very unusual.
Well, you know what? I saw him doing budget, and so he thought that that might be the time to bring it up. That was last week, but that kind of stuff, we need to immediately, you know...
He got a new generator last year, because the generator was...
Yeah, but I know you handle it.
We've gotta be careful with that, too, because as this building's gonna have renovations, there's gonna be a new building up there, too, so...
That ambulance garage?
Absolutely.
I didn't realize that, but that's good to know.
They've got plans. They're working on it now, so we wanna do it over in phases, so we have to look at that also. Do we wanna replace or put a lot of money into it? Or can we patch it to keep it till the new building goes up, so...
Yeah, I'll speak to them about that, because certainly, that, yeah, we don't wanna spend a lot of money on a roof and get it ripped up.
Absolutely not. So anyway, moving forward, because I know it's a long list, and we... Drew, what's the next item?
Yeah, the two roofs, Town Hall and P D. The Town Hall roof is almost forty, P D is almost thirty. And it's obvious what they're... You know, what they're guarding. They're guarding evidence. They are guarding legal documents.
Right.
And we can't afford to have them get wet or get moldy.
Sure.
So those are what, third and fourth?
There again, though, if you... If... I'm not sure what your plan is for the next phase of the whole moving Town Hall out to Second Street. You know, over the years, it's always been discussed that Justice Court would move here, and police would move out into the police station. It'd be like one big, you know, capital improvement. If you do that, and you bond to do that, and we could do the H V A C in this building, as you know, from last summer, we were... We were in dire straits to keep that pile of junk running. It's from the seventies, you know?
So with this building, Ken, while you were out, we talked about when the O C A weighs in, then we'll determine how this building is structured, but in the meantime, back to the police. They need a roof, to your point about, you know, evidence and protecting all that is critical.
And the thought was, maybe you do one bond to do this conversion. You don't need a lot of work internally in the police station to allow them to let their belt out when Justice Court leaves, so a little bit, but certainly, maybe you could roll the roof into that package, you know?
As long as it does, this doesn't hold, then, uh...
Yeah, we also have to make sure that this location is gonna be approved by O C A. At one time, it was. This is was the court. However, the standards have totally changed. And so we have to make sure that we... Before you even go to bond, you gotta make sure that... And I mean, and they can give you a preliminary thing, okay, you know, it's acceptable to us. We're gonna do the work and give you the changes, but you need to make sure that... You know, you don't want to say, "This building is not acceptable, and we're not going with it," and then you have all this in place. So unfortunately, and I spoke to Lori Holt recently, and I told her to start the process with O C A. So hopefully...
We do have some kind of a preliminary plan that we worked on with Alan Smith and Dick Ellis years ago for this building, showing the Sally port, showing the prisoner holding cell, showing the lawyer. Basically, taking into consideration their knowledge of what O C A requires.
I believe that was a long time ago, very...
It was a long time ago.
Very, very long time ago. Again, the standards have changed.
Yes.
And so now we have to go through this, but, you know, you can submit that to them. They may say that's fine. I mean, you have it, but, yeah, okay.
George Young Community Center, another system that's... H V A system that's forty years old. It's electric, and it's, like Ken said, it's just a pile of junk right now.
Yeah, it's a heat pump system that was put in the seventies, because there was no natural gas there, and I guess they didn't wanna deal with the oil tank issue, you know, underground oil tanks. So they opted to put in a heat pump system, which is basically Freon. And the units are failing, and they're R twenty-two, and the new rules are you can't use R twenty-two anymore. The refrigerant has been outlawed, so you have to use R four oh one, and unfortunately, we're finding out the hard way that you can't just change the outdoor unit when you upgrade to the new Freon, because it runs at higher pressures. You have to change the inside unit, too, dealing with it in a couple of buildings. So the... Two of the units are running, and they're hanging in there, but the third one for the basement, the outdoor unit is completely shot. The compressor seized. We can't get it running at all, and it's only running on electric resistive heat in the winter, so that's costing a little bit of energy, and we don't have any air conditioning down in the basement. So we have a proposal, and back about fifteen years ago, in the heydays, when Keyspan was pushing natural gas, we were able to get a gas line run from South James Ford Avenue to the building, and there's a regulator and everything there, so I could easily tap that and convert it to natural gas, because we've already got that allotment from there back years ago. So that's what we would do. We would put three natural gas-fired furnace combination cooling and heating units.
So, Drew, you have an updated list, you said, because I have H vac down at number one, two, three, four, five, six. Did you move them up?
H vac at six. H vac...
I think she's looking at the spreadsheet, Drew.
Oh, you...
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Oh, you're looking at the spreadsheet?
Yeah, yeah, that has to be. We have to read.
You have a copy of that, or you just moved it up?
I believe...
I have a copy.
I have it at number six.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Yeah.
Okay, you just moved it up.
We have to move that up based on our meeting this morning. Yeah, we'll do that. We'll...
No, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
We'll toggle it around.
Fine. You know, you did a very good job explaining this sheet out. Are you working from that sheet? Are you working from here?
No, I'm working from the narrative.
Oh.
Yeah, there we go.
Do you have two copies of this for them?
Yeah.
Yeah, she'll get you two copies. This is actually very good.
You don't have that in the back of your package, your narrative?
Yeah, that's right. Everyone has a copy of this in the back of their package, right? Yeah.
But you're working, I understand you're working from the narrative, so...
Right.
Oh.
Down to ambulance roof replacement. Roof is total... Well, let me just talk about that, how bad it is. That's a hundred thousand dollars. George Young Community Center, I actually dropped that to almost the end. So the next one would be Laurel Lane Road End. We... We're responsible for that road end. The town is South Hold. Town of South Hold is just on the east side of it, and it's... There's pavement down there, but it's completely destroyed. Someone's hit the guardrail several times. That's destroyed. We just replaced the stairs, building the grounds, did that by scratch, from scratch, I believe. All metal stairs, because the other ones were deteriorated beyond use. So just the infrastructure, which is the pavement and the guardrail, is around about fifty thousand dollars.
Drew, in your opinion, should we be paving as far to the south that we have been, given the fact that there's water rise, and that's been happening? And I think, Tim, you brought it up about Meeting House Creek Road.
South James Ford Avenue.
Yeah, South James Ford Avenue. I mean, we're paving maybe too far to the south, because it's just getting eroded.
You know, the atmosphere comes to a zamp, and we pop early, and we went through something.
Yeah, yeah, this is... This is... I'm talking about Laurel Lane.
South James Ford Avenue goes right down.
This is fourth, you know, this is like four feet above high tide, at least.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Next page is Reeve Beach. Anyone who's been down there knows the condition of the...
Yeah.
The end of the ramp.
We brought it up again last night at the beach committee meeting.
It's just gotta be... I mean, it's just gotta be done. It's gotta be designed and done. Bayberry Park, I think everyone's pretty familiar with the condition of Bayberry Park. Our total estimate on that is almost six hundred thousand dollars. And I think that's... I just took a fresh look at it, so these numbers are fairly accurate. Just the park, I mean, just the parking lot alone is four hundred thousand dollars.
That's been paved in years.
Nope, there really is no drainage. No, there is drainage, but it's not enough.
Yeah, it's right. It just goes down the hill right into the tennis courts.
Yep. Edwards Avenue, same thing as... Yeah, hell, mostly. Same condition as Host Landing Road and Grown Oak, badly deteriorated. And we patch it up right now, but it's gotta receive the same treatment that we had planned for Reeve.
Drew, that's one that I live near, and I think a lot of what you need to do down there is to remove things that have accumulated on the beach, as well as repair the...
Oh, it's just... It's a mess.
It's a mess down there, really.
Yeah, it's a mess.
But it certainly needs repair on the ramp, but there's also things that need to be taken out of there.
Yep, I know. One thing that... Does that have a... Does that have a groin there? I think it does, right? Yeah, one thing that we don't wanna do is we don't wanna start...
No, we don't wanna mess with that.
We don't wanna start moving that stuff around. Edwards, Meeting House Creek Bulkhead Repair, I just got a cost on that from Terry, is seventy-six thousand. And that's fifty feet. We did fifty-two back in, what, two thousand and twelve or eleven, eleven to twelve? I think everyone's pretty familiar with what a bone of contention that location is. Stotsky Park, Stotsky Park, Columbus Avenue, basically the same area. Anyone who's been down to Stotsky Park knows the condition. It's atrocious. And the road that connects the end of Columbus Avenue to Powell is constantly being repaired and band-aided as well. Both those need brand-new surfaces. That's why it's so expensive. And those are recent costs as well. Stotsky... Wait a minute. Actually, I moved a couple. I moved a couple up. I moved... The next one would be the highway garage door replacements. Replace all of the grand garage doors, thirty-five thousand dollars.
They're in pretty bad shape. Some of them are broken on the bottoms, gotten hit by trucks, and something that they've been asking for for years. The problem we always have with that is that, you know, being responsible for twenty-some odd buildings around the town, we have to look at priorities based upon all the town buildings. I know it's a big priority for Highway, but when we have failing air conditioning and heating systems, it falls down in our priority list, which is why we had suggested maybe... I don't know that Highway has its own capital improvement budget. I'm sure it's a high priority for them, but when you put it on this list, that's the problem. Maybe it could be put in the Highway budget. It's a thought.
South James Ford Boat Ramp needs a lot of work. Needs bulkhead, needs drainage, which is the next item. Just those two alone is... Are almost six million dollars. I think that would be a huge consideration as to whether we wanna spend that much money down there to make it super attractive. It's usable, but it's a mess, like most of the other items on this list.
I think it was constructed in like the mid-seventies, when the state had control of it. It was done in the seventies, and then sometime...
It was for dollars or something.
We leased it. We leased it to the state for like a dollar every year for twenty-five years, so that it became... It was a state, actually, a state facility on town property. And then in the nineties, like mid to late nineties, that lease ended, and the town opted to take it back so that it would be a town facility. And at that time, the state panicked, because we were going to charge out of towners or not allow out-of-towners to use the ramp, so they gave us actually a big chunk of money. And we did some work in there. We did the lights. That's where the lights came from. And we did some bulkhead repairs with that money in order to keep it open to town people as well. So I wonder if they wouldn't...
It was in the nineties.
It was in the nineties, yeah.
You have to say, that's the premier boat facility in the town, right?
But again, yeah, yeah, I would say so. The only... As far as getting into the water?
Yeah.
It's pretty much it, yeah. I mean, wedding rivers. We have a little ramp at the end of Cohen Street, but it's certainly very small. It'd be a shame to lose this facility, that's for sure.
Okay. East End Arts Cohen House, we've actually done work over there and allowed that item to go almost to the bottom of the list, because we've, for now, eliminated the leaks. Stotsky Park Field Lighting, to complete what we did this year, would be another one point one million dollars. And what was that, Ken? This whole way.
Sorry. Field lighting?
Yeah.
Right, the field lighting conversions. Yeah, we had gotten a proposal. As you know, we relit fields. We just recently lit fields, three and five? Four we had done years ago. We just did three and five. And we used L E D lights on it, and the difference in the cost and the electricity is staggering. It's mind modeling. So we had asked Musco for a proposal to convert the rest of the park. It made sense to convert them to L E D, but it's very expensive. I approached P S D and G, because they do have rebate programs, and they gave us a rebate for our streetlight conversions and our building, all these L E D lights we did here. They haven't yet come up with a athletic light rebate program, but they're trying to work on. The problem that they have is they can't, like with the building, if they know the use of the building, have a rough idea of how many hours a day they operate, and they can figure out the savings between, you know, H I D lighting or fluorescent lighting and the L E D. And they base the money they give us back based on the savings for doing that upgrade. With athletic field lighting, it's very, very, very difficult to get the number of hours that the lights will actually operate, so it's a pain in the neck for them. So what we did was last year, we had our electricians go in and put hour meters on every one of the pole lights in the entire park. And P S D and G has gone on the record saying that they would accept that data, and then they could look at how much the savings would be and tell us how much of this one point one million they would reimburse us. Unfortunately, they don't run a lot. If it's a parking lot and it runs ten hours a day, three hundred sixty-five days a year, you know, so... But we'll see. We probably, at the end of this season, coming into the fall, we can look at those numbers and have a better idea of what the rebate would be. You know, if it's fifty percent, you might wanna bite the bullet and fund the other fifty percent and maybe use it like we did with the streetlights, borrow the money and pay it back with the savings and energy that we would realize.
Good.
You know, so Drew and I are working on that one.
Good.
Okay, so the next item would be South James Ford Tennis Court and Basketball Court L E D conversion.
Same thing.
Are those metered over there, too?
I believe we have meters on those as well. I'll check. I think we put them on all of them. I believe we have meters on those as well, I'll check, I think we put them on all of them. And PSCNG agreed that, you know, if we kept that data, they would accept it.
That's great.
They trust us, and it's.
It can't be too many, if it's only sixty-five thousand.
No, there's only one down there, four poles, and they're not tall poles, the big poles are very expensive.
Uh, last one, last one is the, um, Duck Ponds. The, the idea was to prevent so much gravel and sediment and feces from entering the pond, the ponds from the outside, um, we were gonna put impervious pavement on the shoulders on North Wedding River Road and North Country Road approaching the Duck Ponds, um, and that would essentially filter out TSS and large particles that would, um, rob the pond of ox- oxygen and basically make it in the condition it's in now. Um, and that would be just over six hundred thousand dollars. And then, I also know that the, uh, town of Brookhaven has been after us on and off for us to replace some twenty-five feet, twenty-six feet of bulkhead, it's not, it's not very much. Um, we only own five percent of that property. Of the Duck Ponds, five percent, that's it. But our, our, um, drainage area is half of it. The, the area that contributes to the, all the runoff to the ponds is half hours.
So they basically gave you a half, half of that.
Yeah.
It's useless and now you're responsible for it.
Exactly right.
That was pretty smart, whoever accepted that offer.
Okay, um, any other questions?
No, I think you did a good job, I think the sheet was very helpful, I think it, 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 uh, makes us all understand what's going on. I know that you have to, you changed a couple of priorities recently.
Yeah, we're gonna revise that when we get back.
If you could just go over to ambulance, it'd be great, I know you guys can handle it and, um.
Well, we reprioritize it and reissue it to, to the full board.
Yeah, won't you mind sending me, send us a copy? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks guys, that was very thorough.
Yeah, it was thorough, that's what we wanted to bring it out in the open, what we need to do, and you know, this is all infrastructure, most of it. And if you don't take care of the infrastructure, everything around is just gonna, is gonna fall apart.
I was just saying, they had band-aided this all along.
Yep, alright, thank you so much.
I know Tim loves thoroughness.
Have a good. Alright, moving fo- moving forward to our next discussion, um, we are, uh, concerning community benefits and the general benefit fund, I guess for this to be put up on, um, on work session, I now understand that there's been some requests for a substantial amount of money, and I just wanted to, unfortunately, I put this up on Monday and then, um, well, well, I think he's gonna be out for this week and next week, I think.
He's just out today.
Oh, just out today? Yeah, so unfortunately, he's not here and I would have really liked to, to be here, so we need to put it back up.
I'm pretty much up to speed on it, so.
Oh, okay, good. So we have, um, we have, um, we've been having some requests for, uh, funds for the hockey rink, and I actually, um, been staying on top of it with the worksheet, and I, uh, and, uh, speaking to our, um, financial advisor, uh, Bill Rother, and, um, so he has provided this, I think you have a copy of the sheet? Did you get a copy of this?
I did not get that one.
I think it's in the back here.
Oh, it is in the back, okay, thank you, I did get one.
So when, um, these are, uh, it's, it appears that just recently, as of two weeks ago, um, there's, there's a request to fund five hundred and fifty dollars for the bathrooms at Stotsky Pond.
Five hundred and fifty thousand?
Five hundred and fifty thousand, and in looking at the contracts, uh, and I have, you know, copies here, you guys have a copy here, it says that we're supposed to fund, uh, a detached, uh, detached, uh, freestanding bathroom facility. And recently, we went from doing one bathroom to four bathrooms, because originally it was addressed many, many years ago and that would have been ideal, and now we're up to seven, and, uh, at a cost of five hundred and fifty dollars.
Who's requesting seven, is it the, uh, iconic hockey, uh, organization?
It's our obligation to build the bathroom per the contract.
Oh, no, I know about building a bathroom, but if it was four at one time, then why is it?
It's one bathhouse.
Oh, okay.
It's not four or seven different bathrooms, it's one bathhouse.
Okay.
So it was under my, I, I was informed, and I'm not sure it's correct, was that it was gonna service all the facilities, including the ball field, but somebody who's very familiar, a coach, says, "My kids cannot walk to that bathroom, that's a half a mile away." So stop using that for the baseballs, um, it's really for iconic hockey, so, um, we, it, this is a tremendous amount. When I, when I signed this contract, I had no idea that there was gonna be these additions. I have copies of the contracts I signed here, and on February thirteenth, well, right after I broke my leg, I had surgery, they took it to my house and they, we signed a contract, it did not have attachments. I've always inquired publicly, I need the attachments, and then just recently, a few days ago, when I asked for what the attorney's office has, I'm, there were some changes made to it, so I'm just trying to figure out what, where are we? It, it, it appears, and we have a list here, uh, they want electricity to the bathrooms, fifty thousand dollars, coming for Nextera, they want another twenty-five thousand for a iconic parking rink, another twenty-five thousand for bathroom engineering, another two hundred and fifty thousand, which we just recently signed within the last two weeks, for bathrooms. Um, and then right after that was signed, I hear that we need another three hundred and fifty thousand, and that's all coming for Nextera, and community benefit money, it's not only, it's not meant, uh, to take a substantial portion to build the iconic hockey rink. While I do support the rink, you saw how many projects we have, how many people in Dianese, our infrastructure, and not everybody's gonna play, uh, hockey, yes, there's a lot of people interested, most of them are not from here, uh, there's a lot, a lot of support, because everybody's gonna come to Beverhead, I'm concerned with seven bathrooms. We're gonna have to hire people.
Seven stalls or seven baths? Seven stalls, it's one bathhouse.
Okay, so seven stalls.
Mislead people.
We're not misleading, so.
When you say seven bathrooms, people are picturing si- the board is picturing.
Okay, so you can. Okay, but you could do it in a little more professional manner, um, and, okay, so that was cleared.
I do it with what I work with.
So, um, so seven, seven stalls, that, so that facility has to be manned, serviced, cleaned, opened, closed, we need to hire individuals, um, there's hockey electricity expenses that was inserted into the budget, um, I did not put that in the budget, it was put in, that's another hundred and fifty. There's a current request on eight eleven for three hundred thousand dollars for additionally to fund. There's, um, again, another, uh, twenty-six thousand dollars for electrical, uh, there's, uh, some current bills out there, twelve hundred, eight, uh, twelve thousand, eight thousand, and I'm just trying to figure out, how much is this rink? We, we cannot raise property taxes, most people in Beverhead are not gonna play hockey, and we need to, uh, have an understanding, this board, that some of this money that came into the community benefit, uh, and a substantial amount of it is going into building stalls, uh, bathroom facilities, all bathroom facility with seven stalls, uh, so, um, we just need to underst- where, how, how much is this gonna cost us? And what is going on with the, um, you know, does anybody have a sense of what's going on?
I can as soon as you're done talking.
Okay, guess you didn't have a good day today.
I did till I came in here. Supervisor, Mr. Yabo, would you please come up to the table? Right, this project has been in the pipeline since two thousand and sixteen. It's bathrooms for Veterans Memorial Park, it's not bathrooms for iconic hockey as you keep alluding to. The bathrooms are for the entire park, we have a couple situations going on where porta-potties are up there and it's a total disgrace to a flagship park. There's not a park in Suffolk County you can go to of the magnitude of Veterans Park where there's a porta-potty. Two thousand and sixteen, this started out in our, uh, capital projects from recreation to get a bathhouse built up there. What we have now are disgusting porta-potties, and we have people using the bike trail, going off the side of the bike trail, using the woods, we have people going across the street into Calverton National Cemetery to use their bathrooms over there, totally inappropriate. We have a beautiful park up there, we've needed bathrooms and we needed lights on those fields for years. But right now, the priority is bathrooms, bathrooms will serve, it will, um, service the entire park, uh, and it's not a half mile away from where the ball fields are. This is a bathhouse that's gonna accommodate the number of people that use it, that parking lot is filled every day between pickleball, the dog park, and the bike trail. Now you throw softball games in there, and we're gonna have, uh, paintball coming in there, and God willing, we're gonna have soccer fields coming up there, Bob Kern, and, uh, this is needed for that park. It's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from community benefit funds, and we're asking to take the ex- the extra, uh, three hundred or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the reserve account. So this is, you're portraying it as, as a bathroom for the iconic hockey, it is not. It's a bathroom for the entire facility, and that's what we're proposing to do. We have excess money in the reserve account, it's not gonna drop us anywhere near below the level that is required of, I believe, fifteen percent. We have probably somewhere near twenty-four, twenty-five percent now.
Could you just remind me of what the acreage is of the entire park there?
Well, the property itself is like ninety acres.
Yes, okay, so to have a bathroom facility on ninety acres makes perfect sense, right?
It's, it's embarrassing what's there now.
Right.
It's not all developed, yeah.
Well, I mean, just to. Just dovetail to, uh, Councilman Hubbard's comments. The bathrooms for Veterans Memorial Park have been in the works even prior to twenty sixteen, and.
Four bathrooms, or five?
Numerous bathrooms throughout the set. Were planned and proposed as part of the area's design plan, which was approved in two thousand and four. Throughout the years, we had actually worked on getting bathrooms and had to go through special permit requirements. The reason why we're able to have them now is Ken and Drew successfully resurrected those prior approvals that were obtained years ago. Um, and I'll just report.
Emily, can you just tell me where, do you have an idea where it was throughout the park, so it was gonna be distributed?
In all the areas, including this area, including this area. Um, and Ray has been vocalizing and requesting it since twenty sixteen. In his twenty-twenty park report, uh, he notes, bathroom, for Veterans Memorial Park, bathroom units needed, high complaint. So the residents have been complaining for years. We have one of the longest walking trails in Suffolk County, ten miles. Even if you're physically fit and you can walk, uh, I don't know, a fifteen-minute mile, you're on, you're at the park and on that trail for over three hours, I mean, it would be nice to have a restroom.
Absolutely.
Hi, the only, the only thing, oh, Tim, you don't?
Uh, so can I say one other thing?
How far is the trail from the bathroom though?
Say that again?
How far is the trail from the bathroom?
It's right there.
It's right there.
It starts there, doesn't it?
It's part of it.
Yeah.
Also remember, we just added three pickleball courts, we have a dog park, um, and we're planning other improvements.
And soccer fields, and these things are pretty imminent, so.
We're inviting people to come to use the facility.
Correct. And we're looking to do indoor, outdoor lacrosse, I mean, indoor soccer and lacrosse, which will be north of where the hockey bubble is now.
And where does that stand?
Uh, we'll know, we're having a meeting next week.
Okay.
But the, the question that I have, the only question that I have, is, it seems to be very far north on the property, maybe just to bring it down a little bit to the se- I'm, I'm sorry, south, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
No, no, Tim, I'm sorry, it seems to be very far south of the property, to, if it came down a little bit to your point about the pickleball court and the, and the dog park, and I, I know we're gonna need a parking lot in addition to the parking lot as proposed for iconic hockey, so, which would be north of the one that's there, right? Cause if you put two soccer fields, anyway, that's just something I would look at.
And, and I just wanna state, in the future, we will need additional bathrooms.
There's no question.
This is the first, and quite honestly, long overdue, if you're a user of the park, which I am, would be nice to have a restroom facility.
But, but I'm not questioning the restroom facility, you know?
So that, I just wanna also state.
I think just in terms of the location, Bob, it, it was, in working with engineering, that the easiest way to get the water and to be able to set this up was basically in the area where this is being put.
That's right, the water authorities.
Otherwise, it would be even more expensive to.
To go further north?
Yep, yep, cause you're running.
But the Water District has their facility right adjoining that, so that's, I think, what the impetus was, yeah.
And I just wanna state, in the resolution for the community benefit funds towards this project, I specifically called out the total cost, this way putting everybody on notice.
There's one more caveat to this, and, and the fact is that this is gonna be a pre-manufactured bathhouse that gets come in and put on a foundation, there's a minimum of a six to eight month order time for this unit, and that's why it's kind of urgent that we do this, because we're not even gonna have it right away. Uh, ideally, the facility has been running and now hockey will be opening up, and it's still gonna be a few months or well into the spring before we can get this thing built, delivered, and installed. So that's the other sense of urgency for it, a six to eight month wait time is.
Yep, and they bill us per month as they're constructing it, so as they reach different levels, we make payments.
Why are we paying an engineer twenty-five thousand dollars on this? Why not, we have an engineering department, I'm just curious, what are they engineering?
I think it's the engineering for the septic system itself, and I believe Kentesta is the one who did the research behind it, so I'm sure he felt that that was necessary or beneficial, otherwise he wouldn't have recommended it.
Yes, is my question? I was just trying to save a couple bucks, but that's okay.
Nothing wrong with that, Bob.
Is this gonna be the, the latest system? Cause I know what indoor soccer and lacrosse, what they're doing is they're doing, and I don't, they're gonna have bathrooms inside, um, and they're using that new system.
That's gonna be great.
Yeah, uh, so it's not gonna, you know, I mean, you know what system they're using here, is this gonna be dry wells?
No, I don't know, Bob, but all I do know, it was approved, uh, by Suffolk County Health Department.
Great, that's all that matters, that's a big.
They wanted, and we're working with that system.
We had to work with them to make it, it had to be by their specs.
No question, that's great.
Okay, so, um, just to finish up with this discussion, so I brought it up to discussion, if the board wants to take the money out of the, uh, out of the Nextera, um, and they wanna take it out of the capital fund, we can, we can say we'll move forward to it, I think that we have priorities in our infrastructure that should also be addressed, not just the bathrooms, um, and.
I don't disagree with you on that.
So I think that somewhere we should sit all together, and that's why I might ask you to come in, because I saw some urgencies, and then I see this money being used, and that's why we're bringing it up, that this is gonna be very costly, it's gonna be a very costly. So that's what that was all about, and, um, if, uh, if, if three members here today wanna say, take the five hundred and fifty, well, we already voted for two fifty, do another three hundred for the bathrooms, then, you know, go ahead, and, and, and we'll, we'll, um, you know, we'll, we'll do what we have to do.
Hey, what are the.
But again, we should not forget about our infrastructure, which is also critical, and I would have definitely supported four bathrooms and then build with it, and then take some of that money and, and work with the community, but that was how I would handle the budget, but. the budget. But it's okay, we'll, we'll move forward from it, and you will, thank you guys for coming.
I have two, two questions. How much money, how much money is left in the Nextera fund?
There is, right now, that is not committed. I mean, actually, I should let Bill speak, you have the spreadsheet.
Yeah, I don't have that number, I didn't, I can go grab it.
Can you, yeah, I'd like to know the answer to that, number one.
I'll let you know by category, because there's separate categories that you can spend it on.
That's, okay.
Yeah, so I, I'll give you a rough number. I believe there's fifty thousand left in community health and welfare, but Ray already has made clear to me that he wants to come before the board and do a improvement at Stotski, I believe, on the skate ramp.
Oh, right.
Isn't it called a skate ramp?
I'm not sure what it's called.
Okay, I just need, for now, I just need a number. My second.
And then probably about ninety thousand left in community education heritage projects available.
Okay, so with that.
So we're pretty much exhausted all of, all the money.
Correct.
And that's what I wanted to have this discussion about, is to find out where we are financially, instead of saying, we need to do this, or, we have to say, okay, let's look at the bigger picture, you know, let's look at now, let's look at the future, are we exhausting all our money? I'm very surprised to hear it, and I'm glad that it was brought up, is that we basically don't have any more community benefit money, and if we do, it was, it's designated already, correct?
Well, yeah, it's being spent on the community.
What it's supposed to be spent on.
It's being spent specifically according to the categories that the town board approved.
Right, but you can also, right.
And there's also a hundred thousand left in police.
But you see this list of nine million, ten million dollars on the engineering, that's also community, and that could, that could, that could help with that, so.
Well, the other thing I'd like to bring up is that I think a lot of what we decided on was before the Solar Two community benefit money was in play, and I don't believe that that's in play anymore, or at least not.
That's correct.
Not anytime soon. So I think we had anticipated more community benefit monies coming through, through in the next project, but I don't see that as imminent.
Right.
No, I don't know what happened with, with the project, do you know?
I, I don't believe they successfully negotiated the PPA power purchase agreement with Leipa PSCNG yet. I don't think, you know, they may never, and that's an integral part of them proceeding. The permit that they received from the state of New York is valid for five years.
And what was the agreement? I thought it was over a million, right? It was a million five or something?
What, what plan?
Two, two. So I, I know that that was something that we had in our eyes.
But the, the community benefit monies, they're designed to address the impacts that the project has.
One hundred percent.
And quote, replenish or make the residents whole for those impacts. That's why they're particular categories. They're, the monies are not to pay for some of the projects on this infrastructure list.
Yeah, but a lot of the projects on this list, it applies.
That's not the impact that the community suffered as a result of the development, and that's why you design community benefit agreements to dovetail, but really, you take a look at the SECPRO record and you pull from there, and that's how you come up with your categories.
So another question that I have is, it's, Solar Two has five years, what year are they in now?
Coming into their third year.
Okay.
And then one more question. Is there a reason, and Tim, maybe you know this, why we went to seven stalls? If we reduce the size to five stalls, we can't, I'm just asking the question.
It's, it's really because of the anticipation of adding the paintball, adding the soccer, and the current need that is there right now are four, so it's just.
Yeah, and Bob, it, when you look at the cost of the smaller units, you're really not saving them.
How do you say it?
You're still going to have all the engineering, the electric, the water.
The infrastructure, it's all the same.
There's certain hard costs that you have.
I get it.
Cut.
What, you're in the movie?
Thanks, guys.
Sometimes the channel thirty-two is a movie.
Thank you. Where was I supposed to strike that?
Thank you.
Strike that from the right, I was trying to think of it.
All right, so I support four bathrooms for now, to save our budget and to work on some of the category projects. But want to go forward, Bill? That's fine, and we'll go on to the next topic. Police, Police Department matters surrounding the July monthly report, and that would be with, hang on, Mike.
Don't tell the chief, he's got a hundred thousand dollars, he's going to spend it.
A hundred dollars?
No, you don't have, kidding.
No, don't tell him, Ray, you saw how happy you got.
I'm kidding.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes.
Issue with postings?
I got it on.
I don't know if everybody has a whole.
Thank you.
I did resend it, so you have.
Oh, you did resend it?
Yeah, I have it on my computer.
There was a typo on the initial page, and I didn't realize that the back wasn't attached to that when it was corrected, so.
All right, chief, to yours.
July was a good month. Our good numbers were good, and our bad numbers were good, so two goods is a good thing. Basically, calls received were down, domestic incidents were down, motor vehicle accidents were up, that's really the only bad number in this report, I think. Deer strikes are down, way down.
You got that, you know, Bob? That's his favorite number.
That's seasonal.
I can give you a percentage, yeah, right. Summons are up, arraignments are up, arrests by subjects were way up, criminal incidents were down, noncriminal incidents were down, revenues up, so pretty good report.
Especially for the summer.
Especially for the summer.
Yeah, when you had, you're in the midst of the height.
Busy season.
Yeah.
The opioid overdoses were zero for July. I think we had four uses of Narcan.
Four Narcans.
Four Narcans.
That seems to be an average number for a month.
Use of Narcan.
Around four, yeah.
That we know of.
Right, correct.
We just did have a fatal overdose, though, this, this month, we got next month.
Okay, so you have?
Cameras, just a little bit of a camera update, we're very close to having the Pecanic Avenue River front turned on. So everything's basically installed, they just have to hook the switch.
And the next phase is?
Next phase, we have three phases in the works right now. We met with them yesterday, north side of Main Street parking lots, Main Street itself, and East Creek Marina.
Excellent, good.
The issues there, especially on Main Street and East Creek, are the connectivity or the wiring. Yeah, so they want to basically hardwire it, would be the best way to go. So Ken was out with us yesterday talking about that.
Okay.
Good.
Chief, I have a question. I got a call this morning, and I don't know how you guys deal with this or what department deals with it, but there are lights out behind the Septic Theater. So do, when, the officers are on patrol.
Overhead lights?
Yeah, yeah, in the, in the park. Do they report, and the poll number, and what light is out?
We do, we can make sure they do it, they'll go around and do it. But I start on a regular basis, so.
Midnight tours.
Yeah, we'll check that.
Okay, that'd be great. Apparently, there's a couple for you out there.
Each officer's responsible for their sector on the midnight tour to go around and make a note of it, and then they submit it to the chief, and then the chief submits it to, I guess, engineering area.
Okay, thank you.
On Septic Theater, right.
I was, I'll, and one other quick thing, I was very disappointed about the kid who stole the credit cards and is going around using them and gets a desk appearance with all the charges, I mean, this is like insane.
Yeah, that's like four arrests on that subject.
Hello, Bell Reform.
Four.
Thank you, New York State.
Southampton had a couple, and we had a couple.
And the guy's got desk appearance, which he probably won't even show up for, this is great.
And then he'll have a warrant.
So we need the civics to go down this and get to New York State, you know? Get together, civics of all Long Island, and go to New York State and get this fixed.
For sure.
Anyway.
Okay, chief, thank you.
Thanks for the deer hits.
Deer hits.
Lack thereof.
Right.
Yeah. And our last discussion is going to be a matter surrounding the GPS monitoring system for town vehicles, and we had discussed this matter before, and the board had agreed to keep GPS system in highway town vehicles, and our highway superintendent has asked to come and speak to us, and so here he is. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, Mike.
So, yeah, the GPS that the highway has, we've had it since two thousand and twelve, and I just requested in budget talks for two thousand and twenty-four to remove it. It's roughly an annual cost of about sixteen thousand dollars, and I got some estimates, just to do some comparisons, on a brand-new pickup, is about forty thousand dollars. So in two, two and a half years of not having GPS, I can basically get a brand-new pickup for my fleet. My department has never really used it in any means, way, or form. We've had it since two thousand and twelve. Since two thousand and twelve, we're up to a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in fees. We do have it in over sixty vehicles, I believe, and I'm just trying to trim the fat off my budget, because I have other budget requests that I did put in for, that we sat in, and I'm just trying to save money and maybe obtain money in other areas that I feel needed. So that's my reasons for the highway department not wanting GPS. Between myself, my deputy, and I have two foremen, we're well able easily to keep track of all our workers, any given point, if we need to check on them, find them, we've never had any wrongdoings. If there's ever an orange truck in the middle of Brooklyn, I'm sure somebody could find it, but we've never had a reason for GPS that are, you know, since we've had it.
I just have a quick question. I use it for management, not to see where the trucks are in any given, but just to know that one of my deliveries is getting done, or one of my jobs is getting done, I use it as a management tool, really, and I'm not saying that you should or shouldn't, but I'm surprised that you don't, because that's, that's really the most important aspect of the GPS, and certainly, I would think, in the realm of snow removal and other things, where you have areas that are flare-ups, and just to know that you're, you're getting to those spots when you get in the calls, oh, I have somebody that's right around the corner, they'll be there shortly, something like that. That's, that's why I use it in my business, but, you know, you, you run your business differently, but I'm just saying that I've found it very useful, that's all.
And many, I've had department heads that swear by it, and they found it to be very effective, and, and most vehicles, government vehicles nowadays, nowadays, have GPS, it's a standard. I understand that you're looking at from the financial component, but it does also limit where you might not be around, or you're on a job, and somebody says, oh, I'm going to take the car home, or whatever, and I'm going to do this, and you can see the mileage, you can see the gas usage. I used it heavily when I was assessing the gas mileage during COVID, and I was understanding what was going on and how much money we were saving. There's a tremendous amount of governments that use this, it's almost across the board. And I, I had spoken to other departments, I was just, we other towns, while we were talking about this in two thousand and twenty, and they swore that they saved a lot. It's just not people from going that extra, taking that extra ride that you're not going to see, or slowing down because it tracks your speed, it limited accidents, and it was, it's a huge amount, and I think, Emily, you want to come up and speak in this regard?
Is there an insurance benefit to having it as well?
I'm not sure we have to add that, that makes sense.
I know there's a financial benefit to have a highway part of it, because the more units we have.
And I get Mike's point, that he has supervisors and he can manage this, but for me, I use it as a management tool.
And so as far as the fuel issue goes, just keep in mind, municipal garage tracks how many gallons you put in per mileage, so we can figure out what each vehicle is getting miles per gallon or anything like that. I understand your, your point, and I do see the upside to that. When I first got transitioned into office, I asked to have it even activated at the computer, because I guess the passwords got lost or whatever, and it took almost three months before I think IT even got around to, you know, putting it onto my screen, my place, so I didn't think, maybe they didn't think it was that important to happen, you know, it's.
I get calls all the time, hey, where's my delivery? Oh, the guy's right around the corner, it's just very helpful.
What do we have, sixty vehicles in highway?
No, we have more than sixty vehicles, but we probably have at least sixty, maybe a sixty-three that are actually being GPS.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I just think, I'm not like against this, it's just, I'm more against the cost. It's costing me sixteen thousand dollars a year out of my budget. My manpower is more important to me and my budget, as you guys are aware, I'm down, down men, and I, I'm just trying to update my fleet with vehicles, everything is expensive, and I'm looking to shave in some areas where I can gain and others. Two, two and a half years of no GPS, I can get a brand-new pickup. I have an aging fleet, and I'm just trying to save costs. I've never had an issue since I was deputy or now elected superintendent where keeping track of my men has been like, oh, I need GPS to do that.
That's not the sole purpose, it can be due, but that's how everybody views it. That is one of the lesser amount, I mean, you're very familiar, you negotiated.
So the Water District, the way they use it, they've got up on the screen slot, you could walk into the Water District and look behind, you know, at their monitor, and so when they get calls in or complaints, they look, they take the closest vehicle who's in the field and direct them. So they're only going to block rather than send somebody else located in a completely different area. It saves time, the response time to residents, and if there's an emergency failure, the ability to respond to that emergency is that much quicker.
But to my question about insurance benefits or any other financial benefits, are there, are there things that apply when you, when you do have GPS in your, in your fleet?
Well, I don't, so we are self-insured.
Oh, right.
So I, so I don't believe, however, it is very resourceful for accidents, litigation, we, or residents filing complaints. We know exactly what time the vehicle responded to your property, did the report, we know, so we log all that, and believe it or not, you know, we do get residents calling in claiming nobody responded.
And we get that on the unit of the department.
And it's real time, and we can, you can print those records out.
Also, the speed of a car, so if somebody gets into an accident, you're going to have the speed of your car, and you're going to say, well, you know, he was going ten miles an hour, but the lawsuit will say he's going fifty miles an hour.
I agree, these are instances, but again, in eleven years, not one instance ever came up.
But really, like.
I'm just speaking for my department.
The departments are using them for, so when you talk about what you save, well, obviously, you're saving gas, and you're saving being employee time, because you're deploying the person who's closest to it. And, you know, all I can say is, the departments that use it, they're very interactive. It, it's up, and that's the way they use it.
So, Mike, I had, you know, before Frank spoke, I had, my, my brain was right, right away plowing, right? Like, if there's things going on and the wind's blowing a certain direction, right, heavily, and you know where your trucks are, it's, to me, it's a man, everybody that I know outside of government that uses this, it's absolute management.
Most government vehicles.
You're not looking, you're not using it to spy on their place.
I don't doubt that, and I don't, it's not, the, I understand the sole purpose is not spying, I'm just trying to also explain, in the thirty years. I'm just trying to also explain, in the 30 years I've been there, and what was I, deputy six, eight? I don't know. Two elected now. On a management level, we've never used it for any given reason, fuel mileage, wind direction, crew. I'm just trying to make savings. Yeah. It's, it's not, I have two foremen. If, if I feel like a road, if I'm getting a call, Sound Avenue is, is getting blown in by Herrick's Lane. I have a crew leader that can go check it. I can call the route. You know, we do have two-way radios in the truck. I'm just looking at an avenue to save money. And maybe I have other budget requests I did put in 2024. If we can all come to a happy medium, you know, I'm just here to discuss my reason why I would like to make some savings, open up other avenues in my budget.
Understood.
So maybe if you really, you know, and I'm not, I don't mean this to be fresh. Maybe if you really start to utilize it, or we haven't had a significant storm and we get one this year and you start really utilizing it for its value, maybe you will save money.
Well.
And, and, you know, in particular, the highway department vehicles that are GPSed, a lot of those vehicles have cost the taxpayers over a quarter million dollars per vehicle. I mean, these are the, these are prized assets and we should utilize them as effectively and efficiently as possible.
Agreed. Here's another fact about costing. When the GPS was first installed in our vehicles, it actually cost the highway money because of the way it was installed, hotwired, installed incorrectly, batteries being drained. It was a total nightmare the first one to two years.
When was that?
In 2012.
Who installed that, Mike?
When it was 2012, the technology is so.
Well, I'm just saying, it's not, it's not all rosy-dozy. There, a lot of bugs got worked out. It's, I just, again, I'm here to talk out loud. It's not enough for me to say we need it. We don't need GPS to survive.
I have, I do have a concern on the insurance side, right? Because when I think about if we don't have, if I say, you know, you know, something, one of our trucks is in an accident, right? And it goes to court, we don't have GPS and somebody claims that the driver was going 50 into 30, right? Now we fight it in court, that's going to be well in excess of $16,000 to fight that suit.
So I think you're, you may have, we might be able to prove that right now. I don't know if Eric is still here. I think one of my employees got into a snowplow incident maybe a year or two ago. And I, I believe our attorneys are handling it. I don't know if GPS was called upon to help remedy this situation.
I don't know that we've looked at the GPS on that yet.
Yeah, it probably has to be, you know, go into trial where they want to, you know, further on to the judge. But one case, it cost the town $2 million, you know.
Well, I'm just saying, this was a motor vehicle plow accident. GPS was never called upon to try to help.
No, no, it's, it's still in court. So you don't know if it was never called upon. Cases start off and it's all motions. Get, just get the paper.
Well, I, I do know because I would be asked to bring it up.
That particular case is still in the early stages.
Yeah.
They've done a preliminary conference. They've set a discovery schedule.
Right.
If and when that gets demanded by opposing counsel, you know, I'll forward that to you. But I, I would anticipate it at some point in litigation.
So it's at some point that will be unearthed in litigation?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's my, that's a, that's a concern of mine because, you know, here's an example where we are in litigation and what's the cost benefit analysis? And does the GPS, if we're doing everything right, is in our favor, you know, one way or the other? I, I saw.
And just be mindful, you have a new contract now with terms significantly improved based upon the number of vehicles. They eliminated a lot of earlier charges that were included. So if you're removing vehicles, chances are.
The other ones go up.
These terms won't apply and everything else goes back up.
I've, I've spoken to Mike and it, and it's not that he's against using the GPS system. It's that in budget time, he feels that money could be used better served somewhere else. So I think if we accommodate your budget, you're not here to say I'm dead set against this. It's just that I'm trying to make.
I appreciate you listening to my concerns.
Do more with my money.
I have no problem trying to help all. These are my concerns. And we're talking dollars, cents. And if we can come to a happy medium in some way or form, we can all talk. But that's how I feel about the GPS.
On a side note, with all the rain we've had, the pump trucks have been out 24/7 and doing a great job. And I just want to thank you and the men and women that do that.
Thank you very much. And thank this entire board for always allowing me to obtain more and more modern equipment. Everybody has been more than supportive. We are trying our best. Manpower is an issue and we're making improvements there also, I hope. A lot of that is reflected in my budget talks. But the equipment is very helpful. It's put to use every single day and.
Good.
The pump trucks in particular.
Yeah. That, that, yeah, it's unbelievable.
Thank you.
I love that thing.
I get a smile when I pass one on the road.
That thing is amazing. You know what? I, I was thinking about it like, just like about 2:30 this morning. Frank, I was looking at Frank Mancini's photographs. He's a photographer, you know. Maybe we'll just get rid of him. I'm doing the work. But, you know, I'd like to see this stuff put on our Facebook page. Like when you're doing stuff, to get it up there so that the public can actually see you guys in action. I know you have it on your page.
I have a private page, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, but it would be nice on the town's Facebook page if you have to share something there because you're a good photographer too, maybe, you know.
Yeah, I'm just no good with computers. So someone can help me with that.
That's all, yeah, Mr. Josh.
Thanks, Mike.
You know, Mike, with this GPS, if you're not satisfied how it's working or sitting on your computer, you know, we can redo that for you.
As of right now, the GPS isn't even activated at my desk.
So he's not utilizing it. So that's why he wants to take it off the budget.
So, no, but, you know, we can fix that.
Please.
And, and maybe just have a monitor that's in the office that's, everybody can utilize. So if the girls get a call and say, hey, you know, what's going on, they can see. I'm telling you, I use it every single day. I have to, have to.
Again, if we can get to that point where, you know, you guys are looking at my 2024 budget, you know, we can make everything work, you know, my ears are.
And I want to get Chip, if, if it's not working, we need to get Chip over there sooner than later only because he's going to be swamped over there and to get it working for you, okay?
Okay, good.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, everybody.
Look forward to seeing that white truck roll.
Keep up the good work with those highway department workers doing a great job.
Thank you.
So this concludes our discussion items for today. In a moment, I'm going to ask for first and a second to enter to the second session to discuss the following, two matters under contractual, matters surrounding contractual agreement between Chief Higginilla and the town of Riverhead, and I will be with the chief. And matters surrounding agreement between the town of Riverhead for municipal solid waste. And that will be with Rockwell, Dillonham, Predente, Roltar, and Clifford. And then we have one personnel matter, matter surrounding possible change in status of an employee. And that would be Dillonham and Predente. Can I please have a first and a second?
Sure.
Enter into a second session.
Checking.
Thank you. All in favor, all opposed, so move. Everyone, please be safe. A lot of activity is happening tomorrow and over the weekend. And we'll see you out there.
Nostrovia.
All right.